The acting director wrote to the Lands Commission in Kofri, directed by the Physical Planning Department of the Brim Central Municipal Assembly to request the cadastral site plan and indenture to facilitate the registration. This is currently ongoing. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Deputy CEO, I think for one of them, you talked about financial issues. What the auditors recommended was just to register. It wasn't about developing it, registration. And if you look at their recommendations, the auditors had even stated that these assemblies may reallocate the lands to other institutions in the absence of the title Ds. So your inability to develop does not prevent you from registering. And I do not think that you need a quantum sum of money to register your interest in the land. And the auditors are right here. You have lost that to ECG. So please, next time you have access to some of these things, let's do the right and register. We have title to it and nobody can reallocate. So that is what we need to do. We shouldn't always blame everything on financial constraint. Every institution has these problems. But then registering a land will not cost you so much. Now you are privileged to be under the Lands Ministry. So they should be able to support you to register some of these interests. Yes.
Thank you. Well noted, Honorable Chair. This will be taken into serious consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, so just to add up to what my brother said, we, the Lands Commissioner was on this committee this morning. And then he's taking steps to make things much easier. So I would prefer, or I would suggest you go see him and then we quickly finish this titles. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We will do exactly as suggested. Thank you.
My question is about your centralization of your operations. If somebody wants to take a permit from you, it passes through the region and the region have to transmit everything to you, sign at the headquarters before they send it back. Even in terms of payment, what system are you putting in place for ease of payment? Because the processes is so cumbersome. What strategies are you putting in place? Second one, you suppose restaurants, hospitality, and then hostels, you're supposed to also give them permit. But a lot of them in this country, you don't collect, churches, you don't collect the money. What strategies are you putting in place to take those money?
Yeah, Chair, yes, I agree that we do have a centralized system for permitting. And it used not to be the case. But just like Madame Chair mentioned, we realized that some permits in the regions were being granted, sometimes not following through rigorous procedures. So in order to put a tap on some of these things, we requested that they should be brought to the head office so that at least we can have a final look at it and then okay them. I can say that, yes, sometimes there are delays, but we are able to issue the permits. We think that because we don't get a chance to do over again and to prevent litigations and also serious catastrophes, we prefer that the permits come to the center where we are able to provide some checks and balances to ensure that they are rightly, they were rightly, the procedure was right before we issued the final permit. So that is the issue. Yes, I agree that for restaurants and some other hospitality industries, they operate without permit. Yes, I equally get shocked when we get somewhere and they say they are not even aware that they are supposed to get EPA permits. I just came from Taka this morning. We're on compliance and many of them would tell us they didn't know they should have a permit. And it is the reason why the late Minister, May his soul rest in peace, was pushing for an expansion so that our presence is felt in almost every nook and cranny of this country. And we are educating as well as regulating. So this is something we are already doing, that we are not only enforcing, but we are educating so that there can be compliance and we solve some of these problems. So yes, we have started going to the restaurants and working with them towards compliance.
Honorable Chair, please, respectfully, okay. Sorry, ever since we became an authority, our policy is to be present in every metropolitan, municipal, and district assembly. So we are registering our presence gradually in all these areas. This year alone, we are committed to opening 35 new offices to increase and broaden our scope in terms of environmental education. In that case, we'll be able to reach out to most of the health facilities, the restaurants and other areas of tourism. And Honorable Chair, we will definitely get there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Chair, just to bear witness that indeed some transformation is taking place at that agency. And talking about they opening up more branches. Last, I mean, a few months ago, they were in Bolé, trying to search for a place to open an office. And so the people of Bolé, they are listening, very soon, EPA will be there to ensure that the right things are done. So indeed, something is being happening, something is happening. And we will take your advice on board. On the issue of the Ministry of Lands helping the EPA to register its lands, let me also appeal to the district assemblies and people who gives out land for government facilities or government organizations. If you don't have the land and you give it out, it becomes difficult for you to be registered. In the case of Taka, the assembly didn't have any document to indicate, let us say, to indicate that they possess the land, they have ownership of the land. So a mere allocation of a letter to EPA makes it very difficult for EPA to be able to register it when they come to Lands Commission. And so the last meeting we have had and the last sitting that I've participated in this same committee, we have always been asking that all government institutions that are giving land try as much as possible to register it, from district assembly to all the agencies. Then you can even use it for other purposes. And so much as we are ready to help them register the lands, if the source of the land, the person who's giving out the land cannot transfer ownership to you, it becomes difficult for you to register. And we need to bring this on board.
Minister, you mentioned that they have come to look at Bolé to see if they can cite an EPA officer. When are they coming to Etuwa East? When are they coming to Komenda Edina Aguafo Abrim? When are they coming to Kumewu? When are they coming to Keta?
It's a gradual process. Keta and then Komenda. Very soon they will be there. What is it called? Atiwa and Kumewu. Ask them when there's money.
Minister, today you are not leaving this committee.
Okay, EPA, you are discharged. Now, let's call CSIR, Building and Road Research. Now, could you, could you please introduce yourself to the committee?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. My name is Professor Paul Bosu, Director General of CSIR. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. My name is Professor Mark Bidiacon. I'm the Deputy Director of CSIR Building and Road Research Institute.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. I'm Frederick Abingray, Head of Finance, CSIR Building and Road Research Institute. Thank you.
Now, what do you guys do?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. I'm Dr. Williams, Director of Finance, CSIR.
You do, CSIR Building and Road Research Institute, what do you do?
Thank you, Chair. In CSIR Building and Road Research Institute, we look at the whole aspect of the building and road sector of the Ghanaian economy. And then the building and road sector of the Ghanaian economy. And then we also develop building materials using local materials for our work. So basically, that is what we do there.
So where have we built a road with local materials?
Well, okay, so for many years, I think we constructed the routes within Ina Kumasi. And that route had stood for almost like 30 years. And sometimes we do consult for other projects within the country. Yeah. So basically, we are not contractors, but usually we serve as consultants.
You see, CSIR, let me say one thing. Bokina Faso grows strawberries. We can't get strawberry to grow here in Ghana. That is one. Number two, we've been talking about sugar factory, sugar factory, all these years. I'm yet to see any organization that has special species or brands of this sugarcane for us to grow. You have to get them from Brazil, you have to get them from India. But if you go to CSIR, we have more degrees over there than any thermometer you've seen in this world.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. CSIR has done a lot and continues to do a lot. When you talk about sugarcane, I don't know for sure, but there's the capacity that we have. It's just a matter of, if, for example, it's the Ministry of Agriculture wanting to get new varieties of sugarcane, it is not beyond the ability of CSIR scientists to do that. So currently, the kind of products and crops and commodities that this country needs, like maize and rice and tomatoes, we have them. We have all the varieties. So that is one phase of what we do. The next phase is for investors to come in and uptake. So we are firmly on the ground, are capable of doing all these things for the country. We do that honestly. Thank you.
All right. My only suggestion is, sometimes don't sit somewhere for people to come to you. You need to go out and sell yourself. I know that somewhere they have different kinds of plantain that they are growing. But if you don't drive to CSIR's office, you wouldn't know about it. Then we keep on complaining. So, Masa, if a tree falls in the forest and you were not there to see it fall, did the tree fall? Let me move on. Because you may be doing so many things, but if we don't know about it, we won't use you. We'd rather bring the Indians, the Chinese, and then the Brazilians. Namotio, with all your degrees, you, let's talk about your finances, please. CSIR, Building and Road Research. What do you get for internal generative funds? Where does it come from?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We get our internal generative fund from consultancies work that we do with some of the mining firms and also the construction industry. And also, we have some satellite research factories that we, like my director said, we do postulare announcement and also break fact bricks with from clay. Thank you.
Now, what is this specialized expense that I see on your statement?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. There are specialized expenses. There are expenses that comes out as a result of projects that are not part of our core mandate. And when it happens like that, to capture it very well or to account for it very well, we normally align your today's specialized expenses. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's look at their financial position. Yours is 7.2 to 1 in 2023 as opposed to 4.0 to 1. Now, what happened over here with that? Oh, okay, I see that. I see that. I have so much to talk to you about your financials. You are doing very well. And you are... Ah, it's, oh, I read what I saw here. Is it oil palm? Hey, what happened to you that we took our palm trees to Malaysia and look at what they are doing with their palm trees? And Ghana, Abengkwenkwan, here. Honorable, Dr. Jassal, you will take care of that one, please.
Thank you, Prof. Chair. CSIR, DG, I know that the first comment, you didn't have time to react adequately to the chairman's comments because as a member of the Environment Committee, we did visit some of your installations and we were amazed at the kind of research output that you have there. And some of them have crystallized into usable products for the Ghanaian people. Some are packaged so well for export. And I think that the limiting factor there was how to support you to be able to expand usage of these products, whether it is honey, whether it is cassava, huge loads of research area.
Honorable Member, let me ask you this. If you weren't on the Environment Committee and you wouldn't have, had not gone to visit them, would you have known what CSIR does?
So, Honorable Chair, that's the exact point I'm making.
Exactly.
So, so we are together. Don't worry at all. We are together. Now, what I'm then saying is that because of the, you know, you talked about the area of professors and doctors they have there. And I want to make the point, because being a researcher myself, it's an indictment that being, having an area of research is a problem. It's not. There are systemic challenges that we have as a country. And the products that CSIR has, Savanna Agricultural Research Institute's products, drought-tolerant products, whether it is maize, it is rice, it is sugum, is enough. But you see governments and our agencies over the years going to import seeds from abroad, et cetera. If you continue doing that, what do you expect them to do?
I thought years ago, CSIR Board, Dr. Kwame Nkuma, who was the president, he used to sit on the board, didn't he?
He used to be the chair, the first council chairman of CSIR. He used to be called National Research Council. But if you would permit me, I also need to explain a bit that some of the technologies and the products that we develop, we hand it over to the relevant agencies. For example, if you talk about new varieties of maize or oil palm, we develop the knowledge and the technologies and then we hand it over. So most of the time, you may not realize that product A or B is coming from CSI because that's why we were established, to backstop productive sectors and agencies. So sometimes that may account for why people don't hear much about us. But because we are working behind the scenes to support different sectors. Thank you.
Is there anything you are doing now or plans that you have to let us hear more about what you have and what you are able to do?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. My name is Dr. Isaac Danso, the Director of Oil Palm Research Institute. So for now, what we are doing is we are partnering with the 21 Economy Secretaryate. 24-hour Economy Secretaryate. And we are supporting in the area of carrying out feasibility studies for investors and also trying to supply them with improved oil palm planting materials. We've had a number of meetings with Honorable Gusitano and he supports the idea that we need to carry out and give them the technologies that we have developed to support in that direction. So that is number one. Let me take you back. During the President's special initiative, the government had wanted to import all the planting materials from Malaysia. And Honorable Alan Shemanti coming to our institute realized that we had the capacity to supply all these planting materials. So there wasn't any importation. We had the capacity and were able to supply all those planting materials in the country.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's, let's go to our...
Chairman, let me, let me add something to this whole conversation. I think that the bottom line is policy. Government policy direction would detect how relevant these institutions will be. And so even for them to go out and be marketing themselves, it's just an added activity they want to do. Their focus is that they sit and government tells them that we want you to develop these varieties or want varieties that are resistant to these diseases and all of that. So then they go into research and when they get the findings, they go straight to give it to government to implement. That is what it should be. And if you go to other jurisdictions, that's what happens. Such research institutions are funded by government. Now, when government gets the results, it is government now have to give out the results to whosoever they want to give it to. It shouldn't be the work of the researchers going to sell their products. I think we should get this right. So for instance, talking about the 24-hour economy program, 24-hour economy program. Government's policy is that link up with research institutions to support you in that whole business. And that's exactly what they are doing. And so if Ministry of Agriculture wants some cassava varieties, they go to CSI Savanna, they do it, and then government then takes it and supply to farmers. If it is rice, government will take the rice and supply to rice farmers. Here in this country, we leave these research institutions and we import these, what is it called, seeds and seedlings at the expense of the researchers. And so for me, we should not blame the researchers. We should have a policy that will be locally oriented to ensure that whatever that is researched and the outcome here are implemented. So this is the little that I want to add to this conversation. But this Ministry, Ministry of Environment, under the leadership of Honorable Emmanuel Amakufiboah, we met last three weeks ago and all these issues were put on the table, that we are getting to a point where we will stop importing things that we are able to produce here. We are importing seedlings at huge costs when indeed we can produce it in this country. A time is coming, and that time is very soon here with us, where policies will direct some of these institutions to bring change that we all desire.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, to your financial performance. I think, Honorable Chair, it looks good. They ended the year 2023 with a surplus of 915,000 Ghana cedis. Huge increase. But I see that your income sources are just grants. Do you have any other income sources?
I'm Abet Banafu, Head of Finance, Oil Palm Research Institute. Yes, our sources, we have grant, the grant, we have grants and then non-tarable income, which is IGF. The grant comes in two components, that is donor grant and then government salvation. Talking of government salvation, it comes in the form of compensation paid to our employees.
And then the rest you, okay, okay, that's fine. Now, your income increased by 34%, which is commendable. Now, let's see your financial position. Your current ratio looks good. At least you can meet your short-term financial obligations. Mr. Chair, I think, oh, compensation increased by 18%. Did you employ some new staff? What happened? How did you get that increased?
Yes, Honorable Chair, in 2023, we got clearance and we did some recruitment. And then also salary increment at some point and promotions, I should say. Thank you.
All right. So that will be that, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you very much. You are discharged. The next one is for CSIR Science and Technology Policy Research Institute. Don't worry, I will come to you for a little bit of research for me. I'm only promoting CSI.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
As Honorable Grappe will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the financial performance, you can clearly see that there is increase in the government salvation to them. And then the exchange difference is double, like triple or four. Internal generative fund have dropped. May I know the reason why the IGF dropped in 2022? In 2021, it was 311, 351, but 2022 is 267.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Chair. Basically, I'm Abdali Babat Hassan, Head of Finance, CSI Steprey. So what accounted for the drop in IGF was that we had a deep in consultancy, which is our cash cow. At Steprey, we are into policy. And 2022 was somehow a difficulty to kind of do a lot of policy research. So our consultancy dipped and that is what accounted for that. Thank you.
And I want to look at this also, your surplus, you have almost, it's also dropped. You know, in 2021, you have over 1.277, but in 2022, you have X63. What accounted for that also?
Honorable Chair, sorry, I didn't get that question.
Plus, there's the drop.
Yes, yes, because we had, basically, as a result of increase in expenditure. Our salvation went up and then that was goods and services.
And then your expenditure went up about 35%.
Yes, please.
Now, when you look at your financial position, I mean, the ratio, you can take care of the short-term issues, but liability have increased. And then the net asset also, in the percentage terms, is about 82.2. Can you throw more light on that for me?
So the liability was as a result of some deferred income. You know, as an institute, we deal with donor, largely we deal with donor projects. And it comes with some action plan where you have to do a particular activity within a particular timeframe. So a situation where an activity time is not up and you have to defer or keep the money till the time is due. So when you have that scenario, you have to defer the income, which comes as a liability.
Policy?
Yes.
And then currently, if you look at your law, your law does not allow you for commercialization of products you have to be taking. Do you think, do you think we should, we should, we should do something about your law? Because it's a research cause.
Okay, so the name is, well, I mean, I'm the director of CSR Science and Technology Policy Research Institute. Currently, we are actually obliged to, to, to commercialize and, and make sure that we meet at least thirty percent of our expenditure. So that is, the commercialization drive is, is very much in place in, in CSR. And I also want to say that in CSR, we actually have commercialization policy in place, and we have a commercialization director. So it's something that the, the law actually demands from us to commercialize our, our research. So just to add a bit more explanation to what we do at CSR. As you know, CSR has thirteen institutions, and my director general is here to explain. And it's commodity focused. We focus on the policy. And it's, it's a research policy interface. So we make sure that before we conduct research, we do a lot of assessment. When we conduct the research and we come up with improvement, we go back and also conduct adoption studies to make sure that especially if it's in the area of agriculture, the farmers are doing their writing and we get all the information that is needed to polish the processes. It's unfortunate that all, all the time questions come to us, what are we doing? You have degrees, the kind of job we do requires us to be trained and well-trained to that tertiary level, and that's why we school all the time. It's very highly technical. We are doing all our best to make sure that the research system runs. It's just that we don't have the, the necessary support. Our salaries are paid. But we also thank government that day in and day out, when we cry out, sometimes we get hit. But I think it's a very good platform for us to sell what we do. We, we are not hitting. We do a lot of visibility engagement. And me coming from the policy wing, it's not, we work closely with Ministry of Environment, Science, Technology, our mother ministry, everything concerning science, technology, and innovation. We are there to do our best to generate the research evidence for policy to be backed with research. And that's what we do. So sometimes we get a bit, you know, but that's all right. We will do more to, to get the, the public known what we are doing. Thank you.
You, you have afratose, free peanuts, you have jollof rice, which can last for two years. You have fried rice, which can last for two years. And you have product. You have soya milk always buy from you, but when you go, you have to kill three men before it comes one. Sometime two men at your small office corner there. At the, at the, at the, I have been buying your product. I have been buying your products, but when you go, sometimes the soya milk is shortage. I have to place order two men before it comes. That is, you have a lot of products there, even the, it's very, so you are doing a lot. You are doing a lot. And so, break a second, you have, I mean, syrup, which, I mean, BP reduces BP, a lot. You are doing a lot, but you're not selling yourself.
Are you hungry?
I, I am hungry, so this-
So, so please, I, I, I just want to place on record that without CSR, there is no Ministry of Agriculture because all our research, especially in the agriculture sector, is we do it with Ministry of Agriculture to make sure that our farmers and our food and nutrition systems get working. And me coming from policy is not just about the, the Ministry of Food and Agriculture. We also work with the, the Trade Ministry to make sure that we have research evidence to back what we are doing. Thank you.
All right, madam, you are discharged. Now let's go for CSR Food Research Institute. Oh, I'm, whom did I call? Food? Oh, okay. And then afterwards, there are animal come.
Thank you, Chair. So Food Research Institute will be looking at your financials, performance and the financial position. So with the financial position, your bottom line was a big deficit from twenty twenty-two. What accounted for this huge deficit?
Thank you, Honorable Chair, and my name is Professor Chastoto. I'm the Director for CSI Food Research Institute. And I'm here with also our accountant. As Honorable said, Food Research Institute, we research into the foods and look at the nutrition content, look at the food safety. And then we also ensure that the food is available in its proper form for nutrition of our citizens. And in addition, we support our SMEs to, to commercialize these research products. So just last two weeks, Honorable was at my institute where we have the World Food Fair. And Honorable was there to look at the various products that we have. And as Honorable also made mention, we showcase a lot of these products. But for the finances, I'll leave it with my finance officer. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Finance Director, can you run us through why that deficit?
Yeah, my name is Sevia Kuju, Head of Finance. So the finance, we had a deficit because we undertook a revaluation of assets during the year. So that brought a depreciation of nine hundred and four thousand seven hundred and seventy-six Ghana cedis compared to ninety-six thousand in twenty twenty-two. So that eroded our profits.
Well, I see, I see the revaluation actually accounted for the loss, but then there are some excesses here too with your operating expenses. What accounted for that as well?
There were a lot of activities that there was a, a boost in activity in the course of the year. That, that resulted in that.
Let's go back to your revaluation. What's your revaluation policy?
The policy is what we, we following the government policy, controlling account and general policy, yeah.
Maybe you might want the auditors to come in, but you should know, you are the accountant there. And you, you have to do revaluation. That caused your book value to go up by over three hundred and eighty-seven percent. Three hundred and eighty-seven percent. So what intervals do you revalue your assets?
So Honorable Chair, the, in fact, it's, it's because the government, most government organizations, including ours, for the various years, the, the books, the assets have been fully depreciated and the figures there are very minimal. So the government deemed it was necessary for us to revalue the asset. That's why we did that, actually.
I think you need to look into the Ipsas and look at your revaluation policy again and understand it. So the next time when you come, you are able to give us better explanation to some of these things. Because for a camp, for an institution to revalue to this tune, you should understand. You should understand how it was done and the basis behind it and what revaluation policy you adapted. Because there are a number of them. And you are saying that, oh, you did revaluation, but you can't really explain to the committee what, what revaluation policy that you adapted, which of the methods you applied and all that. So next time, come prepared on this one. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And food research, I'm only making one appeal. Sugar cane for Commander Sugar Factory. Come up with a variety that has a lot of water in it.
That should be crop research, crop research. They are here to come.
Research is not part of-
But they are not even part. So, but the director is here.
Yeah, the director is here.
So you can, you can appeal to him.
Yes, director. Commander Sugar Factory was left idle for eight years because the claim was they didn't have the right variety to grow the farm, to have the farms to feed the sugar factory. So please, help us so that we can get these nice sugar canes that would be, that we can use. We spent over thirty-six million US dollars to build a factory, and it's a white elephant. Now, I didn't mean a brown elephant. It's a white elephant. Thank you very much. Now let's go to animal research. Please introduce yourselves to the committee.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Ebenezer David Okweni Ansar, Director, CSR Animal Research Institute.
Thank you, Mister Chair. My name is Peterson Opoku Dacosta, Head of Finance, Animal Research Institute.
Honorable Frank Eboa, that's your turn, please.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Animal Research Institute. I'm first looking at your financial performance. Because it's not bad, I will not take much of your time. You changed a surplus of one hundred and eighty, eighty thousand in twenty twenty-two to five hundred and thirty-eight thousand in twenty twenty-three. So the surplus, you made, you made a profit or surplus. So that's good. What, what's the component of your finance, finance income? Is it investment or what?
Thank you, Honorable Member. We have three budget lines. We have the compensation for employees, which is by government, given by government. We have the non-tasable revenue, that is the IGF, that was internally generated fund. Then we have the donor grants. So these are the three main budget lines of Animal Research Institute.
No, I'm talking about the finance income, finance income.
Our finance incomes are most surplus or unused research grants, which was carried forward for the next year to be used.
Okay. So over the, with the exception of goods and services, that increased by a hundred percent. The rest are okay. So what caused that? What accounted for that huge increase in the use of goods and services?
Thank you, Honorable Member. Animal Research have a donor project. And the donor project, most of our expenditure is based on research. So if you look at our grants, you see donor inflows for that year was high. So if it is high, then expecting that the expenditure also will be high. So that is the cost of the increase in the expenditure. That is the research expenses.
This one, this is an innocent, harmless question. I'm seeing income tax expense here. What is it?
Income.
Tax expense. You have, or we don't have the account. Or we don't have the account.
Okay, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, we have the income tax expense. That's the withholding task we hold from the suppliers.
Let's go to your financial position. The current assets increased by thirty-five percent. And it's mainly due to cash and cash equivalents. I don't have the main, the whole account, so I won't say much about that. But if you have cash sitting somewhere, you have to invest some of them. So I don't have the whole account. So let's look at your current ratio. It moved from zero point nine to one, to one point five to one, which is not bad. So just keep an eye on it so that you, you stay within the standard of two to one. It's okay, you're doing well, so it's fine. That's it, man. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Animal, Animal Research, you are discharged. Now we call Water Research Institute, please. Please introduce yourselves to the committee.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Professor Mike Osayakunwana. I'm the Director of Water Research Institute.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Frederick Eboa, Head of Finance, Water Research Institute.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Doris Amo, Accountant.
Honorable Bao will take care of the financials, please.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, the, the financial statements of performance for the year ended thirty-first December twenty twenty-two. And then looking through it, I found that your internally generated funds for twenty twenty-one reduced to in twenty twenty, reduced in twenty twenty-two. And then also your donor grant also went down. And then what accounted for this?
Hello, Chair. In respect of the internally generated fund, our consultancy drop, the main reduction is a result of consultancy decline. Consultancy, which is a component of our IGF. It declined for the year twenty twenty-two. Then in respect of grant, most of the grant at the end of twenty twenty-one, some of them ended. So that's a result of-
In fact, Chair, we have different streams of income and each one comes with a duration. For example, you can have a grant that you hold for about three years or four years. And then likewise for the internally generated. So by twenty twenty-one, I think what happened is that some of the streams of donor had ended by the end of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. So because of that, we couldn't get the same amount that we had in twenty twenty-one into the same amount as twenty twenty-two. You also remember that in twenty twenty-one, that was the COVID time. So because of that, a lot of institutions who would have gotten consultancy from were quite careful how much money they input. So because of that, twenty twenty-two became a little bit of a challenge in terms of getting consultancies. So that is what happened over there. And I think in terms-
The editor saw that your recurring grants that went up. So what, what is the recurring grant? Can you explain, explain what, what that mean, the recurring grant? Is that your survey, the money you receive from government?
Yes.
Okay.
Largely on the compensation.
Okay, okay. And then I realize that your research and development fund is the same as that for the previous year. What happened?
Released from, they released from research.
Research and development?
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a grant. It's a grant that's for about five years. So every year, a portion is released to the, the current year population.
And it's almost the same amount every year?
Yes.
Six to seven?
Six to seven, yes.
Okay. All right, then your, your your income, it's almost the same as the previous years. However, your, your expenditure increased. Your expenditure for twenty twenty-two increased. Meanwhile, you had the same income from twenty twenty-one. So what was, what was the major cause of the jump in the expenditure?
Thank you.
In fact, what happened is that coming back to twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, you realize that in twenty twenty-one, the, the annual, the annual inflation in twenty twenty-one was around ten, but that of twenty twenty-two was around thirty-one percent thereabout. And it's reflected significantly in the goods and services. The foreigns and fuel, which is a major component for research travel, went from about seven thousand in twenty, seven Ghana cedis in twenty-one per liter to about sixteen Ghana cedis. went from about 7,000 in 27 Ghana cities in 21 per liter to about 16 Ghana cities per liter. So we had this sharp increase. So it affected a lot of our expenditure. Even though you had the same money, but your expenditure went significantly higher because of the inflation in 2022. So that is what accounted for a high rise, high cost of our expenditure.
Well, generally, I see that your account is good. I've seen an increase in liabilities and also an increase in the current assets. That might, I believe that would have been the cause of the increase in liabilities. But your current ratio is looking good, however, is declining. So maintain the momentum so that at least your organization, any time there's any financial obligation, you can be able to meet it. Mr. Chairman, that should be all for me.
Plant genetics research, that was all we did, right? No, it's water. Water, you are discharged. Plant Genetics Resources Research Institute, please. Please introduce yourself to the committee. And Honorable Petu will take care of that.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chairperson. My name is Dr. Daniel Ashikote. I am the Director of the CSR Plant Genetic Resources Research Institute, based at Bunzu, in the eastern region.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair.
Did you say, can you please, sorry, madam, please, can you repeat your name?
Dr. Daniel Ashikote.
Oh, thank you.
Good afternoon. Please, I'm Sarah Ofori, Head of Finance.
Okay, thank you. Let's first go through your financial performance. I see here government subvention went up 8.151 and then the rest. Your internal generating fund also went up. And then your donor grant also went up. Just that you had a deficit of 105,056 in 2022, as over surplus of 287,685. Can you throw more light about that? What has accounted that deficit at the end of the year?
Thank you very much, Honorable Member. Before my Head of Finance takes up the question, I would like to provide some context by providing information as to what we do. Per our mandate, we are mandated to collect and conserve plant genetic resources and also coordinate all plant genetic resources activities in Ghana. And the plant genetic resources are all the hereditary material of plants, including pollen, seeds, and any other plant parts that can be used for propagation. And they form the foundation of every seed system. In effect, you can't improve any plant material without plant genetic resources. So that is the work we do. And we conserve these public goods for current and future generations. Thank you very much.
Please, we got a deficit of 105,056 as a result of during the period, we had a revaluation of our landed properties. And we were assisted by one of our sister institutes, BRI, they just got out. And because of that, our depreciation for the year also increased. And also had the research expenses increased due to a lot of research we undertook during that particular year. So that resulted to the deficit of 105,57. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to add to that, our mandate requires us to go around the country to collect plant material that are at risk of being lost. And this means that we move around every year. And for the year 2022, we went around to collect more than 1,000 assertions of plant genetic resources from across Ghana. And that increased our operating costs.
Let me ask you. You have IGF, internally generating fund. How do you generate that? Can you share?
Yes, we have different systems of conservation. We do EC2 and EC2 conservation. EC2 conservation is where you take the material from where it is located because it's under risk to the gin bank, what we call gin bank. Then EC2 conservation is conserving it where you find it. And for EC2 conservation, we have what we call orthodox material. That's seeds that you can dry to low moisture content without them losing viability. For them, we conserve them in freezers, under cold storage. Then for recalcitrant material, like cocoa, when you dry it, it will not grow. So for those ones, cassava, yam, we usually have field gin banks. And so we have some of our fruit tree crops that we conserve in our fields. And usually we sell produce from them. Then we also produce seedlings of ornamental plants for sale to members of the general public. But for the genetic resources that we conserve, those ones are public goods, so we distribute them to users, mainly farmers, students, and researchers for free.
You make fees and charges from that, is that right?
We sell them.
You sell them to generate something?
Yes.
Anyway, it's not that bad. Let's go to your statement position, financial position. I could see your non-current assets reserve above standard, 2021, 255,000 moved to 9,581,000 as your non-current asset. Your current asset also 227,000 moved to 754. What is the secret? What did you do different than you were able to move to all the standard?
Honorable Chair, like I said earlier, we had a revaluation and that resulted to the increase. And it was in the three categories of our landed properties. That's our office and lab buildings. And our farmlands, we are also revaluing the bungalows, the residence buildings for the staff. So all these were revalued, revalued, and that resulted to the higher increasing percentages.
All right. Last question. Your current ratio, 2021 was 2.2 to 1, and then the 2022, 2.0 to 1. The auditors were saying that you could do better. So I want to find out from you, what measures would you put in place? So that what they recommended here or what they suggested here, coming back next time, you could see that the institution is doing far better than what we see today.
Thank you, Honorable. What we can do better was the difference, though it was declined, but when you calculate it, it's not very significant. But the reason being that we had a lot of accruals, including our ECG. Like my director said, because of our CG banks, we have to install a lot of our produce or our research products. So that resulted to a higher electricity. So because our liability was huge, it would definitely affect our ratios. So we will replay that, we will do better in terms of our IGF. And if we get even a donation or any grant from maybe governments, you'll see that all our ECG or accruals will be leveled out and our ratio will be increasing in our next year, the following months.
Mr. Chairman, to add to that, yes, we are engaging with ministries, departments, and agencies, and also private organizations to provide services. Some of the seedlings that we sell, we also do landscaping. And as I was coming to Parliament, I told myself that we could do landscaping for Parliament to improve the, you know, the serenity of your environment. And I believe for a small fee, we could do that to help the cost of conserving genetic resources for the common good of everybody. Thank you.
Chair, that will be all. Thank you.
He's a good salesman.
Chairman, I think he's simply saying that through you, very soon, there will be a proposal to Parliament for them to be able to do what he has just described at a fee.
Look, definitely. I think CSR is doing so many good things. If they, I mean, we need to support them. We need to support them. It's just that simple. And I would wish those in crops and animals, maybe if they had a small experimental farm so that we could go, me, I'm a farmer, so I go there, oh, I like that. Then I need it on my farm, oh, I like that, I like that, you know. I just want to eat strawberries, but I have to go to Burkina, I buy. So you are discharged. The next one is Forest Research Institute. Please introduce yourself to the committee, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. My name is Kwame Ntriudro. I am the Director of CSR Forestry Research Institute of Ghana. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair. I'm Isaac Bohin, the Acting Head of Finance, CSR Foric. Thank you.
All right. Acting Head of Finance, you see your income went up 75% comparing 2022 and 2023. Your total income went up 75%. But you spent it all to the point where you went from a surplus in 2022 to a deficit in 2024. How come?
In the valuation. So that is exactly what we did. So the consumption of these assets, that is the figure that eroded all the surplus that we could have posted. Thank you.
All right. Forestry Research, would you tell us what you do?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We conduct research in all aspects of forestry. We also disseminate the research information. We commercialize some of the research output. And just to give you an example, since 2002, Ghana has been engaged in the National Forest Plantation Development Programme. And Foric, CSR Foric, has been a key collaborator or partner for the success of this programme. We hold the National Tree Seed Centre, where majority of the plantations in this country, whether it being from the private sector or the government-led initiative, we supply them the quality seeds and the quality seedlings for the programme to be successful. So a number of plantations that are successful in this country has its roots from the Forestry Research Institute of Ghana.
Thank you very much. You are discharged. The next one to call is Savanna Agriculture Research Institute. Please introduce yourself to the committee and tell us what you do.
Good afternoon. Chair, my name is Dr. Francis Kusin, the Director of Savanna Agriculture Research Institute. We have the mandate for the five regions in northern Ghana. And we're making impact in the lives of the farmers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Abdallah Mahamar Rafai, Head of Finance, Savanna Agriculture Research Institute.
Honorable, there will take care of it, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we have before us the the group of people who, in my view, hold the future of Ghana. I say this because if CSR, particularly the Savanna Agriculture Research Institute, is able to stand up to its responsibility, I think that will make a headway. So I go straight to your financials. And I wouldn't break it down because the bottom line is that your current ratio position from 2022 figure to 2023 improved from less than 1 is to 1 to 2.9 or 3 is to 1. That means that you are capable of meeting your obligations, short-term financial obligations, when they fall due. That is commendable. But what I find significant and I wish to draw your attention to is the fact that you hold a very huge potential, but you're just sitting on it. And I cite two figures from your your statement of financial performance for the year ended 31st December 2023. You had recurrent grant of 22 million, donor grant of 22.6 million. And with this, together with the huge non-current asset position, fixed asset position of 222 million and current assets of 7.6 million, you were only able to generate IGF of 4.7 million. Indeed, if this was a private sector entity, you have been declared highly non-performing.
But Honorable Member, look at the current ratio.
Yes, the current ratio is, you know, there are obligations when they fall due, they will be able to pay. But I'm looking at the potential they have to generate income, which they are sitting on without using it. That's the point I'm making. So I would like to know, and here around this table and in the discussion in this room today, we've all heard clearly that CSR has the mandate, the law mandates you to do research. And along the line, you've also received that power to commercialize. What is preventing you from breaking through? And I can cite the sample, for instance, of you know, the one institution that readily comes to mind is the Allpan Research Institute at Kedee, for instance. Why are you not able to use such institutions to do the necessary research and commercialize, to realize the income? Because clearly, you cannot be sitting on assets to the tune of 222 million. You also in this year received a total income of 49 million, but yet still you only generated IGF of 4.7 million. Tell us, what is the challenge? Chairman, that's my question for you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Our staff, so that my director can come in somewhere. With the non-current asset of 222 million, sorry, when it started, where with the Germans, those these GTZ that came and put up these assets for government. And since they left, actually, it is the IGF that sorry, has been depending on us, our recurrent expenditure. And since they left, actually, it is the IGF that sorry, has been depending on us, our recurrent expenditure. But over the years, like last year till now, our director and management have put in a lot of measures to increase the IGF that we raise. Because in most cases, with the first, the recurrent expenditure, the donor, the recurrent grant is our salaries. And then the donor grant is mainly for project activities. But what we use for our day-to-day electricity and other expenditure within the institute is the IGF that we are able to generate. So management have, led by the director, have put in several measures to increase IGF. But with this, the huge recurrent, the huge non-current asset that you quoted were investments that were. And most of them, even money to even rehabilitate or maintain them currently as we speak, we do that through our IGF. I think my director will add something to that.
And Honorable, there's enough evidence on the face of the paper indicating the effort that we're making to make sure that we take our own decisions in our own hands. Looking at twenty twenty two, IGF was doubled as compared to twenty twenty three, as shown in the face of the document. And this is an initiative that we have taken to make sure that the product that we have developed that are making huge differences on the farmers' food are promoted. And so now this year, from last year, we're using our technology pack. Honorable was asking that he wanted to do a demonstration. We are invited to Namkala at our site. We have a demonstration park where we demonstrate our best-better technologies, engaging media to make a lot of noise. And with that, we're able to increase our IGF from our produce to this. And the current figure is how much? Up to seven million. So we're able to do this through lobbying and, I mean, networking, getting NGOs, projects to come and pick our product. And so as one of the honorable members said earlier, if government interventions that are using CIs are channel to research, we can do more than this to support the development and growth of the nation. Thank you very much.
Chairman, just a bit of correction. I noticed the trend from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three as you sought to portray, that you increase the IGF. That is good. I am looking at the return on how much you have by way of funds available to do this and then the return you are able to generate in terms of IGF. That you can up, particularly, don't forget that we are in an era where we've just introduced, I think, the flagship program of the country currently is the twenty four hour. Yes, if we, if we actually take advantage or we leverage, we leverage these policies, you'll be able to do better than you're doing currently. That is what I want to draw your attention to.
Well, you take, Honorable.
Thank you very much. You are discharged. And Honorable Minister, thank you so much. No, you are not done yet. Because Ghana Atomic Energy is here. So let's call Ghana Atomic Energy. CSR, you did very well. I'll be coming to you. Now, Ghana Atomic Energy, have you guys taken the oath? Okay, now introduce yourself to the committee.
I'm Samuel Wachidampari, Professor and Director General of GAIIC. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I'm Francis Inde, the Director of Finance, GAIIC.
Honorable, please, I'm Williams Kwejo Stierkuma, Director of Administration.
Please tell us what you do. Tell Ghana what you do.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to share what we do with honorable members. GAIIC, we are into peaceful application of nuclear science and technology and then biotechnology for socio-economic development of Ghana. And our activities cut across all sectors of the economy, from agriculture, water sector, health, industry, for industry use, non-distractive testing for evaluation of material, that is integrity of materials, systems and all that. Then when you go to water resources, we use isotop hydrology to look at your water systems and all that. Then our great, we have biotechnology with tissue culture and all that. So, Honorable, the issue you raised, we already working with a company, Komenda. That is Komenda Sugar Development Limited. So the entry management committee, we are working with them. They visited us twice to work on this sugar cane. And then we collected samples from the area. We are doing individual culture to come out with varieties and for mass production and also help the farmers within the catchment area. And then when it comes to cancer, I think at this juncture, maybe let me pay tribute to Nanakunedu Ajiman. You know, we facilitated Ghana Atomic Energy Commission and the Ministry of Health facilitated the establishment of two radiotherapy centers. That's the Kalibu and then the Konfanoche. But prior to that, Nanakunedu Ajiman has to follow the then the Director General, Professor D H Moechi, and then Professor F K Alute to Vienna, to meet with the I E U Board of Governors. And she gave about one hour lecture to them, convincing them why Ghana needs this radiotherapy center. And based on that, they said initially, we're going for one. They said they will give us three. So that's the Kalibu one, Konfanoche, and the third one, we haven't done it, that's the Tammali, which we have to wait to make sure that we get the Tammali radiotherapy center established. So that is why I said we are into so many areas. And when it comes to the ionizing and non-ionizing radiation, make sure that we protect people, human beings, and then the environment against this ionizing and the non-ionizing radiation and all that. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. You are discharged. Now, Honorable Minister, finally you are discharged. We thank you so much for sticking out for Mother Ghana. You've done a great job.
Let me also thank you for your patience and for your tolerance in accommodating us. I think that you are doing a good job. We always come around to support you in the interest of Mother Ghana. And let me use this opportunity to also thank all the agencies who have traveled very far to this place to help us unravel or resolve these issues. So all the agencies and the Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources, agencies and the Ministry of Environment, Science and Technology who have come here on behalf of my minister, I want to say we are grateful. Let's continue to work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister, and we are also grateful to you for attending upon us. I know you really understand us because you were previously a member of the Public Accounts Committee. And so you know that the work we do is very important. We want to also use this opportunity to thank you all for attending upon us, members, the Audit Service, Secretariat, and the media. We are very grateful to you for the support you continue to give to us. On Monday, we have the Ministry of Communications, Digital Technology and Innovations. We also have Ministry of Education and Ghana National Petroleum Commission. We had Bank of Ghana, but they have written to us saying they cannot make it. Respectfully, we like to send this message across to the people we invite. We work within a timeframe. This sitting is supposed to last two weeks as ten working days, from the twenty seventh of October to the seventh of November. Then we break and we have the national budget. So if you ask for dates outside our sitting period, you make it very, very inconvenient for us. We also have a duty to attend, look at these reports, and get the reports to Parliament for Parliament to endorse the recommendations that we give. So we urge all of you to try as much as possible to work within the timeframe that we give you. That notwithstanding, Bank of Ghana will get to you on the new time or the new date for you to appear and before the Public Accounts Committee. And we hope that with that, you won't be able to attend for us to proceed with the necessary reports. Thank you so much, members, and we look forward to having you again on Monday for us to continue with the reports and the ministries that I mentioned. Thank you. The Audit Service, we know you have a mandate to deliver an update on what we have been able to retrieve, especially for those audits that we gave thirty days to complete or to take off the infraction that had been cited against them. We'll do that on Monday. We'll give you that opportunity to update the people of Ghana, those who have really come to you to clear their infractions within the thirty days and those who haven't. And then we can take the next steps as the law prescribes for us to do. Thank you very much. We are grateful to you. Thank you.